Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Harwich Planning Board meeting for Thursday, the 2nd of May, 2024. My name is Duncan Berry. I'm the Chair of the Board. Does anybody plan to record this meeting? Because Mass General Law requires you to tell us, so we can tell everybody else. With a negative on that, I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good evening. We have a scheduling issue with one of the applicants. So, we are going to change up the order of the meeting a little bit, starting with the public meeting portion, which is case number PB 2024-15. Jeffrey S. Lang, manager, JSLW LLC through their agent, John Cassell, Whitcomb Building and Remodeling LLC, seeks an endorsement of an A&R plan entitled Plan of Land in Harwich, Mass, prepared for JSLW LLC by Moran Engineering Associates and dated for April 4th, 2024, under Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Sections 81L and 81P, and Sections 400-9 and 11 of the Harwich Code for properties located at 581 and 585 Route 28, Assessors Map 14, Parcels Y2 and Y3 in the Commercial Village Zoning District and the Village Commercial Overlay District. So, this is an A&R. Yes, Ms. Flynn?
And yes, Mr. Chair, the A&R is, the reason the A&R is here tonight for two reasons. One, it was a condition of a previous site plan special permit review from 2011. So, the current applicants, the current owners of 585 and 581 are here tonight to merge the, to expunge the property line that currently exists. And so, this is, this does not trigger a subdivision of land, so I would recommend that the Board vote to endorse the A&R as presented.
Any questions from the Board? Any comments? Would like to entertain a motion?
So, I move that the Board endorse the A&R as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further considerations? Any questions from the public? Any questions from Ann? Hi, Ann, sorry. So, we have to do a roll call vote tonight because we have a remote member. And we will go with a vote then. So, Mr. Muns?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Berry, aye. Ms. Maslowsky?
Aye.
And Ms. Rudy?
Aye.
And Ms. Tucker?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous, I so declare it. The second item on the agenda this evening is PB 2024-14. Jeffrey S. Lang, manager, JSLW LLC through their agent, John Cassell, Whitcomb Building and Remodeling LLC, seeks special permits for a site plan review in the Village Commercial Overlay District, Harwich Port, in order to build in addition to a pre-existing mixed-use building pursuant to the Code of Harwich, Sections 325-51, as directed by Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9 and 11, and Harwich Zoning Bylaw, Sections 325 to 55. The proposed project is located at 581 and 585 Route 28, Assessors Map 14, Parcels Y2 and Y3, in the Commercial Village Zoning District and Village Commercial Overlay District. Hmm, sounds familiar. So, shall we start with you, Christine, or do we have a representative from the applicant that would like to make a statement?
Normally, we have the applicant, and then I will do my presentation afterwards. But I'm happy to do a presentation and walk us through the project as well.
Well, why don't we hear their thing again? So, this is actually, this was a closed hearing that you've come up to speed on, is that correct? Okay, so just so we're...
No, 481 Depot Street. This is a new public hearing.
Oh, so this is a new public hearing?
So, this is a fresh public hearing for everyone.
Okay, good, all right.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, sorry.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair, committee, thank you for having us tonight. I appreciate you all being here. We did give prior narrative for this project maybe three weeks ago. And we're back. And I hope you don't hold my win last night, my one-run win, Alan.
No comment.
It's a heck of a Little League game.
No, that was a good game.
Heck of a Little League game.
That was a good game.
Yes. Anyway, we're back, and we were before historic last week, which they acted favorably upon the project. And now, we're here before you all again.
Okay, Christine.
All right. Matt, if I can have, just to quickly acclimate everyone to the project, here is the town of Harwich.
It's not on the laptop in the hit the right arrow.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Other side.
Let me see.
Let's see. I switched it up, my, it just doesn't look good.
Next slide? All right, so this is the town of Harwich. And I don't have the laser tag, but the property you can see is in downtown Harwich. Oh, no, I'm sorry, this is 481 Depot Street. Matt?
Okay.
Second PowerPoint. While Matt's loading up, again, the project is located at 581, 585, Assessors Map 14, Parcels Y2 and Y3, the Commercial Village Zoning District, as well as the Village Commercial Overlay District. The proposed project is to provide in addition to a pre-existing historic mixed-use building that is pre-existing, that is also a pre-existing non-conforming structure, because two parts of the building encroach on the sidewalk. The lot area is 14,558 square feet, both lots combined. The applicant seeks a site plan review special permit modification. Again, this was reviewed extensively in 2011. And the proposed project consists of a two-story addition with retail on the first floor, office space on the second floor for a commercial, including a basement, front porch, first-floor area, second floor, again, office space. The overall addition is approximately 2,331 square feet, excluding the porch, bulkhead, and any additional exterior stairs and walkway. Applicable laws for Mass General Law, 48, Sections 9 and 11, the Harwich Zoning Bylaw, Sections 325-51L, Village Commercial Overlay District, as well as 325-55, Site Plan Review Special Permit. The, so the comments from town boards, we did share the application with the Health Department, Water Department, Fire Conservation, Public Works Department, Building Department, as well as the Police Department and the Zoning Compliance Officer. The Zoning Compliance Officer noted that Sections 325-51L, 5B states that front setback requirements shall be determined at the time of site plan review based on, based on the existing development patterns and the elements of the proposed project. Therefore, the Planning Board will need to make a determination on what the front setback requirements will be for this addition. Based on the determination, the project may need relief from the Planning Board of Appeals in the form of a variance. The Police Department did not have any comments. The Health Department did not have any comments as well, except that the Septic System passed inspection last year. So, the project history, in 2011, the Planning Board approved a site plan special permit for the addition for the parking lot. And the parking lot was to, went from 10 parking spaces to 18, with two additional parking spaces reserved for a future addition, which didn't end up taking place. And the Planning Board approved a waiver of their 23 required spaces, noting that the increased parking, as well as the reconfiguration of the curb cuts from Route 28 to Bank Street for the egress and, for the egress and, for the access and egress, thank you, I still trip up on those, were switched to Bank Street, and they felt that was an overall betterment for traffic flow, and the increased parking is always better in the downtown, in the Harwich Port area. The 2011 project also included a stormwater management and drainage plan for the reconfiguration of the parking, as well as the surfacing of the parking and building areas. So, the Previous Site Plan Review Special Permit also, as we mentioned earlier, did require that both 581, 585 lots be merged together. So, in terms of the zoning requirements, the front setback requirements will be determined by the Planning Board. And if you, if you, if you look at the site plan review, there are two, two front setbacks. For Route 28, there's a 7.5-foot setback, and then off of Bank Street, there's also a 10-foot setback. So, staff is recommending that there be a setback set not less than five feet, so that as the project gets developed, if there, if there needs to be a little bit more wiggle room, the applicant has that. And I think also, the five-foot setback is also in keeping with other projects further on down Route 28, along the Harwich Port area, as well as the Commercial Overlay, the Village Commercial Overlay District. So, in terms of streetscape, we really want to encourage that, and I think the Overlay District empowers the Planning Board to make that determination. And so, the five-foot front setback for both Route 28 and Bank Street would be my recommendation to the Board.
Not my PowerPoint, I'll have it.
Oh, okay, great. I'll run you through the PowerPoint in a second. So, in terms of other recommended findings, the applicant's agent, John Cassell, Whitcomb Building and Remodeling, on behalf of Jeffrey Lang, manager, JSW LLC, 53 Main Street, Unit 1, Chatham, Mass. The subject property is 581, 585, Route 28, Assessors Map 14, Y2, Y3. The property is located in the Commercial Village Zoning District, the Village Overlay District as well, Village Commercial Overlay District, excuse me. The project proposed consists of a two-story addition with basement to a pre-existing historic mixed-use building, as well as a pre-existing non-conforming structure. The current use of the property is commercial mixed-use, which is consistent with the current zoning in the Harwich Port area, both for retail, commercial, and mixed-use. The site is an appropriate location for a commercial addition to an existing mixed-use building in the Commercial Village and Village Commercial Overlay District. The proposed project, again, is in keeping with the Harwich Port streetscape. The proposed project overlay district, again, so long as the Planning Board makes a determination of a front setback not less than five feet from Route 28 and Bank Street, would be staff's recommendation. The project did also comply with the A&R condition from the Previous Site Plan Review Special Permit, and the applicant's agents did apply for a modification that was filed on April 9, 2024. If there are any other questions or recommendations, I'm also happy to run through the PowerPoint.
Do we have any questions from the Board at this point?
I had a question while all the phones are going off.
Sorry about that.
No problem. It seems like it's a popular night. We're taking care of all the phones going off in one meeting. This is fantastic. This stormwater issue, was that discussed? Was that an issue at all in 2011?
It wasn't an issue, but when, anytime there's a repavement of surface, you do want to ensure that there's appropriate drainage in place. And at the previous, in the 2011 site plan review, there was extensive review by the town engineer at the time. So, the existing property has the appropriate drainage, and the, any roof runoff from the addition will be, will be addressed through gutters and downward spouts to the leaching field, subsurface leaching area and the catch basins that are in the parking lot as well.
Throw you, Mr. Chair, just a follow-up on that. So, there's nothing that would require a change to the new stormwater regulations that have been enacted, the existing suffice at this point?
I didn't see any reason.
Okay.
I didn't have our engineer evaluate it. I felt the addition was minor enough that it was appropriate, because it wasn't, again, it wasn't changing the existing, the parking plan at the time that was approved by the Board, so.
And one thing I didn't see, I know there's an existing Site Plan Review Special Permit. Do we have the recording information for that existing permit? Do we know? Do we know if it ever was recorded? Do folks know if it was recorded? Do you have that?
We have the decision. And I did, we did provide that to the applicant. And I think we put it in the packet as well for the Board. But if it isn't, I can also forward that to everyone.
While you're looking for that, is there any questions about the setback recommendations by the, by the town with no less than five feet hearing?
Is there any precedent for that? I've never seen anywhere in my short time here, in my review of the code, I've never seen a setback as small as five feet.
Well, if you look at that whole downtown, the new development in downtown of the Harwich Port, that's exactly, they're bringing the buildings right up to the sidewalk.
That's the, that's the whole point of the Commercial Overlay District, the Village Center Overlay District, was to make a streetscape and to bring, to bring the buildings forward. It's why the Cape Roots building is forward. It's why everything else is, it's why the special permit that we did for the lot beside this building was done on the Commercial Overlay with a, with a shorter setback as well.
Okay, and that, that's in the code? I just haven't, haven't seen it.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, that answers my question.
And, believe it or not, it is being supported by a bunch of research in urban planning and neuroscience.
Hmm.
That is conducive to kind of the well-being of town, smaller towns that, you know, keep their streetscape kind of tight.
We're doing the same thing in the Historic District as well. It's why the, the new, the new convenience store is closer to the street. It's why when the other buildings are being renovated next to it, their additions are coming forward to make them closer to the street, to make the walking streetscape.
Anyone have any questions?
I know, I did a little site visit right before this and walked by, and walked all the way down, so I think consistency with the rest of the, that street would be great.
Yeah. Ann, we don't see you, but I can hear you if you want to say anything.
I'm good with this. I'm familiar with the Overlay District laws and requirements.
That's all good? Alan?
All good with me.
So, are we at a point where you found the submission?
I do not have a copy, I do not have a copy of the decision. I just, for the, for the facts, I'd just like the recording information if somebody else has it.
Mary, would you like me to get you a copy? I have one.
If you have it, that'd be great, unless the applicant has it.
We have it. Would you like to see this?
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect.
That's fine. I just, for consistency and for town.
That might have been one of our decisions.
Yes, we didn't, I didn't get that.
Yeah.
It was on, man, 2011.
I'm good.
Well, very good, then.
So, I move that we, if there are no questions, we move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Oh, excuse me, roll call. Ms. Rudy?
Aye.
Ms. Maslowsky?
Aye.
Mr. Berry, aye. Ms. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Muns?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
It's unanimous, so the public meeting is closed?
Yep, got it, I've got it.
And we move on to the next motion.
So, I would move in the matter of PB 2024-14, that the Planning Board adopt the following findings of fact. The application is for a Site Plan Review Special Permit modification to a Site Plan Review Special Permit that was originally approved in October of 2011, and recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds in Book 25841, Page 309. The date of this application was April 30th, 2024, with a hearing date of May 2nd, 2024. I'm not sure that the application date is correct.
April 9th.
April 9th, thank you. The applicant's agent is John Cassell, Whitcomb Building and Remodeling. Landowners are Jeffrey Lang, manager, JSW, I think we have it table.
JSL.
JSLW, thank you. Landowner's address is 53 Main Street, Unit 1, Chatham, Mass. The location is 581 and 585 Route 28, Assessors Map 14, Parcels Y2 and Y3. The zoning district is Commercial Village Zoning District and Village Commercial Overlay District. The development type is in addition to a pre-existing historic mixed-use building with a pre-existing non-conforming structure. The lot area is 14,558 square feet on combined lots. Project description, the applicant seeks a Site Plan Review Special Permit modification for an addition to a pre-existing historic mixed-use building and non-conforming structure pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11, and the Harwich Zoning Bylaw, Sections 325-51, Sections L, Village Commercial Overlay District, and 325-55, Site Plan Review The application and hearing documents include Form A and Narrative 2, Project Narrative, Planning Board Site Plan Review Application, 3, Owner Authorization Letter from Jeffrey Lang, Manager, JSLW LLC, 4, Proposed Site Plan of Land, Moran Engineering Associates, Daniel Croto, Civil Engineer, Number 46253, and Michael S. Ledoux, Professional Land Surveyor, Number 37560, dated April 9th, 2024, as well as Architectural Renderings, 5, a Stormwater Management Report, which is not applicable, 6, and a butter application, and an application fee. So, the current use of the property is commercial mixed-use and will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The site is an applicable, appropriate location for a commercial addition to a pre-existing mixed-use building in the Commercial Village and Village Commercial Overlay District. The proposed addition is in keeping with the Harwich Port streetscape. The project is in the Village Commercial Overlay District, Section 325-51L, which states that the front-back, front setback requirements shall be determined at the time of the site plan review. And at this time, the Planning Board reviews, makes a determination and the finding that a setback of not less than five feet is appropriate from both Route 28 and Bank Street. Seven, the property is also subject to an A&R endorsement by the Planning Board, which will meet compliance with the 2011 Special Permit Site Plan Review Condition, which has already been approved by the Planning Board at this meeting. The applicant's agent has applied to the Planning Board for modification of Site Plan Review Special Permit granted in 2011. The application for the Site Plan Review Special Permit Modification was filed on April 9th, 2024, and subject to the conditions of approval stated herein in the applicant, application and site plan as modified, conform to Sections 325-55 and 325-51L of the Harwich And a public hearing is, on this matter, was duly posted and held on May 2nd, 2024. Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Any further comments, questions? Time for a vote. All in favor, Mr. Munn?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Ms. Maslowsky?
Aye.
Ms. Rudy?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Berry, aye. Vote's unanimous.
So, I would move that the Planning Board approve the modification of the 2011 Site Plan Review Special Permit, subject to the following conditions. One, the proposed modification shall be in accordance with the site plan referenced in the application materials listed above. This decision shall run with the property. Conditions of approval shall be binding on all future owners. Three, the Planning Board has determined that the front setback shall not be less than five feet from Route 28 and Bank Street. Four, the set, special permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk. That 20 days have elapsed from the filing of the decision, and either that no appeal has been filed, or that an appeal has been filed within such time period, is recorded in the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds and indexed under the name of the property owner of record and the parcel address. Five, the special permit shall lapse within two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal referred to in General Law, Chapter 48, Section 17, from the grant thereof, if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced, except for good cause, or in the case of a permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date, except for good cause. Six, changes to the site not authorized under this decision will require further Planning Board review and modification to this decision. Seven, the applicant shall conform to the inspection certification and as-built plan requirements outlined pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, and any provisions of the original Site Plan Review Special Permit from 2021 not modified herein remain in full effect.
2021 or 2011?
2011, I'm sorry. Remain in full effect.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further comments, questions? Time for a vote. Mr. Munn?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Ms. Maslowsky?
Aye.
Ms. Rudy?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Berry, aye. That is unanimous.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
You.
We move, with the timely arrival, Mr. Zender, we now move to case number PB 2024-11, which is continued from April 23rd, 2024. Ro Oliver Nominee Trust, David Crosby and Stephen Farnsworth Trustees, through their agent, attorney Benjamin Zender, seek a Site Plan Review Special Permit for a mixed-use multifamily and to develop a portion of the property as a self-storage unit pursuant to the Harwich Zoning Bylaw Sections 325-55. Properties located at 481 Depot Street, Map 36, Parcel B1, in the Industrial Limited, IL, and Residential Rural RR zoning districts. All again, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I'm sorry I'm late, everybody. I was just rushing from Eastham. And I just received from Christine a copy of a review by VHB.
Yep.
That I looked at on my phone in my other hearing. I think I understand it. And Christine and I had emailed back and forth about maybe requesting continuance on this. I'm going to propose something else for the Board just to listen to, if you don't mind, since I'm here.
Yep.
I'd like to report that on April 24th, the Standing Board of Appeals approved the variances that were required, all the requests, it was relief required, which leaves you with Site Plan Review. In looking at the VHB report, it really falls into two categories.
Okay.
One is plan revisions that they're suggesting, for example, you know, having a notation on the plan, a variance is granted, identifying whether the property's within 100 feet of a wetland, identifying the parking spaces on the plan, traffic circulation arrows, showing water lines, and building color and texture. The second section has to do with the stormwater report, which was submitted for review. I think it came out at the last... I think, as came out at the last meeting, we're not required to have stormwater engineering because we're under an acre.
Right.
And so what I'm going to request of the board tonight, if it flies, is that you, you continue your hearing tonight. If you see fit to grant an approval, you see fit to grant an approval, subject to our providing to the planning office, the first section of plan revisions, the notations that are required and requested by VHB, but that you not require us to go back or engineer and revise our stormwater management reports because they're just not required. We'll still build what's shown on the plan. The plan will still be developed, the project will be developed in accordance with what's been submitted to you, but we just don't want to have to go back to John O'Reilly, have an update of stormwater report for something that's not required, and then have another month to come back, or two weeks, whatever, to have this done. So that's my proposal.
Okay.
For you, for your discussion at least, you know, and I respect whatever decision you make, obviously.
Well, so this didn't come, and we didn't get the VHB report until four o'clock today.
I know.
So none of us have had a chance to really look at it. So if you don't mind, I'd like to hear from the town.
Yeah, and I, and I hadn't run this by Christine either, because I, I was just running from hearings tonight. She, she was kind enough to email it down to me when it came in, so.
So let's, let's hear what the town's.
Yeah.
Take is on this, and then let's take the, um, basal temperature of the board, and then move from there.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if, you know, for the site plan review recommendations, I, I, um, I think those are easy enough to, um, to accommodate. Maybe with the exception of the parking, if we can clarify that a little bit more, that would be helpful. Because I think they did raise some of the concerns in terms of the situation and someone backing out into a parked car.
Yeah, we're happy to talk about that.
Okay, great. And for the site plan, for the wa, um, uh, water, um, for the stormwater management report, I do agree with the applicant that it doesn't require a stormwater management permit. However, I, um, considering that I had just received this, I, I'm, I'm a little hesitant to make a recommendation because I haven't had enough time to really review the report from VHB.
Right.
If we could continue it, um, to assume, you know, I, I do realize the applicant, um, has, um, some time constraints relative to the project. Um, I, I would prefer to maybe defer back to the board.
So, we have, our situation is that our next scheduled meeting, uh, is, our next, yeah, scheduled meeting is June eleventh. Sure you don't want to make that stretch. What we could do is, um, split the difference, and, um, we, we will be opening a meeting, um, as we always do, before town meeting. That's on Monday night.
Tuesday. We haven't posted it yet, so Tuesday.
Tuesday, correct. So we, so on Tuesday. So my, um, my thought is, would that give us enough time to reconvene here, open the meeting, reconvene, ha, digest the ultimate decision or the, the take of the town on this matter, and then move. So if that is acceptable to you, I mean, I, that would work with us.
I think that's fine, because at least it would let the board, and, and with Christine's assistance, intelligently understand what VHB is recommending.
Right.
But we won't make any changes or do anything before that meeting. And then if the board decides that we do need to revise plans before you can approve, or we have to, we'll know and we can come back on June eleventh.
Right.
Does that work for you, David?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
So my question on that issue is, typically, we post before town meeting to hold it over at the community center for just a nominal.
I understand.
Meeting.
Right.
So if we're going to, if your intention is to do that, I think we need to make sure that we have a quorum that's going to be able to vote on it.
Right.
And that we're willing to be here first, because a matter like this, just with everything else, we should be on record and we should be recorded, and, and that's where my concern is coming before town meeting.
And you're all trying to get over to town. I mean, I hate to impose, I mean, I thank the chairman for suggesting that. I, I'm happy to come over. I don't know if it's a meeting that night. But I, you know, I, I, you know, I think we're going to have to have a fifteen-minute discussion. That's what I see.
That's kind of what I see, and my thought is that if we can't do it legally by that date, then can we do it later in the week?
So i- if we post tomorrow, there is still time to have a meeting.
Okay.
Um, I'm just saying, we're going to have to, if town meeting starts at seven, rationally, we shouldn't do it any, any later than five. Because we need to give ourselves time to do that and then still get, get over there without.
Does that make sense to everybody? First of all.
Either that, or I would propose another, another day in May, and to just do a special meeting, which I'm happy to do.
Right.
As long as it's not the twenty-first.
Anne, are you available remotely on Tuesday?
Um.
At five o'clock?
This coming.
Yep.
Yes, this coming Tuesday, five o'clock, yes.
How about, uh, everybody else here? Yep. What day? Tuesday?
The seventh.
Tuesday, the seventh. Five?
I think that's smart, and because if, if Attorney Zender thinks, thinks it's worthy of an hour discussion, which we should give ourselves that, anyway.
I, I think it's fifteen minutes. You know, I, from what I see.
If we can hold, uh, my son's birthday that night, so we are going to Noble House, so it's kind of.
Ooh.
Oh, you're, you're, yeah, okay.
So.
You think fifteen minutes and not, not longer?
If you set a timer for fifteen minutes, I'll be done. I'll be done, because I, what I see is, unless the board wants to open up this thing again, which I, I think we've beaten it to death.
Right.
I think we need to be able to address to you, look, where the parking spaces are, show you the building color. Um, we're going to present to you a request that we not have to go back and redo stormwater calculations, but that we'll build what's being approved.
Right.
And if you vote that that's acceptable, and then what I would ask is that you vote to approve, subject to the requirement that we submit through the planning office, before we get any kind of a building permit, a revised plan that addresses all the matters that, that VHB put on the plan requirements. The directional arrows, the parking spaces, the building color, the wetlands delineation.
We typically do that anyway, right?
Yeah, so that's what I would suggest, and then we can just, you know, we can just go back and generally do that before we come in for a building permit. Or, we'll do it right away, but still.
Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Five o'clock.
If you need, what, what time is your, is your?
Yeah, what time's dinner?
We'll be bringing bread probably six-ish, so.
I, I had a trial fall through. I can come anytime you want.
Do you need it five?
Yeah.
Five, five.
Is five better for you?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't know if five-thirty was better for you, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, good.
I'll be here.
Okay.
And this gives us a quorum with everybody that needed to do what everybody needed to do.
Great solution.
Yes.
Okay, so I would request continuance.
So I would move that we, um, continue matter PB twenty-two-four dash eleven to Tuesday, May seventh, uh, at fi, no earlier than five PM here at the hearing room at Town Hall.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? Love the vote. Mr. Munn?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Berry, aye. Ms. Maslowsky?
Aye.
Ms. Brady?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Aye. Aye.
There we go.
Thank you all. Nice to see you again.
Thank you. Thank you for making it.
My favorite kind of hearing. Keep fast.
Thank you.
So we now move to the matter of, uh, I believe our, um, approval of draft minutes from the twenty-third of April.
I move that we approve the draft minutes of Tuesday, April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Vote by roll call, Mr. Munn?
Aye.
Ms. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Berry, aye. Ms. Maslowsky?
Aye.
Ms. Brady?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Aye.
So that is unanimous. We have, uh, update from the, um, planning office regarding Eagle Pond, that, um, Town of Dennis matter that we have, where they're going to use our infrastructure and get all the benefits thereof, and not pay a cent for us. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
No, Mr. Chair, um, it's, it's a repurposing of a building, um, um, that is located in Dennis,
but the main access point to the, uh, facility is, um, is through the Town of Harwich. And, uh, there was a public hearing. Uh, there was also a newspaper article wondering what, how the Town of Harwich felt, so I, I just at least wanted to make you aware that, um, it, um, it did come up in the newspapers, so. And if you, um, do you have any concerns or do you want to submit a letter, say, from the planning board? I'm happy to also, uh, draft a letter. Uh, their public hearing was continued till next week.
Just a question. Do they, um, do they receive any town services, or are they, all their services are from Dennis?
I believe all of the services, it's, it's just their transfer, their vehicle, the, the road access. Thank you.
So I guess my only question would be, is our police and fire primary responders, or is it Dennis police and fire over Harwich roads?
Good question.
That would be my only.
I thi.
Not that I think it makes a big difference, but, but it is, you know, just.
Logistics.
Yeah.
Logistics of it are.
Just a question, but I, I mean.
Yeah.
To me, I would defer to whatever the selectman, if the selectman wanted to send a letter.
Right.
Okay.
I don't know that we know enough to draft a letter ourselves tonight.
Okay. Um, the second item, the town zoning map, um, in light of the four-eighty-five, four-eighty-one Depot Street, there were some, um, anomalies with split lots, uh, in terms of the zoning map. So, um, as a, uh, maybe a long-term project, it, it's something I will be looking into in terms of, um, if whether or not the, uh, town zoning map needs to be updated. So that's sort of on our list. Another issue that has come up in front of the community development team meetings are, um, unpaved roads and the determination of safe and adequate access. Uh, the process for that determination is, um, not entirely clear in terms of what the, in terms of the process for the determination, but also what are the legal ramifications for, um, right-of-way's, um, as well as, uh, public access requirements, and then development rights, um, along those roads, um, because there are limitations, uh, through the planning board, that, that, uh, you know, um, need to be clarified and spelled out very clearly to, um, to not only Town Hall staff, but also, uh, I think just the public in general.
I want to say there was some, there was a vote or some determinations back in the early two thousands from the planning board that said that they gave some criteria. I seem to recall having seen it in the past couple of years. Not saying that it was probably exactly what you're looking for, but I want to say there was something out there.
Okay.
And we've dealt with some of this in public ways.
We have. We have with ancient ways and with some, with some cart paths and things of that sort.
Well, it's, it's, it is an issue that has come up, so I am, um, um, working informally on it, just to maybe for my own education, to get up to speed in terms of what the town has done and, uh, moving forward, how we can, um, just be clear in terms of process. So, uh, that's a, that, that was just a quick update. And then, um, for other upcoming development, um, projects, there's a pending apartment building on nine-twenty-eight, uh, Route twenty-eight, which is under, uh, historic demo delay, and so there is a proposal for eighteen units of, uh, year-round rental housing. Uh, I believe there are six apart, six buildings with three apartments, uh, and it's next to the Zootie Building, just before the Chatham, um, Harwich line off of Route twenty-eight.
House property.
What, I'm sorry?
The Nickerson House property.
The old postmaster.
And, um, there are one or two other, uh, upcoming development projects, and I, they are just escaping my mind right now. But, um, I do, I will keep you up to date in current, in terms of any other upcoming projects, just so that you're aware of anything that's, um, coming up on the docket.
Okay. It's nice that we have, you know, it's a little surprising compared to pre-COVID, when we were doing like fifty a year. It seems like we're at a slower pace now, but we'll see.
Not really. They're coming. Don't worry.
They're coming. They, it seems a little more manageable, instead of like those five and six hearings per night when we'd have those longer. But anyway, be that as it may, thank you very much for the updates. Um, do we have any, yes. Anne, I'm sorry, I didn't see. Please, by all means.
Um, that's okay. Um, can you give me that address you said for these eighteen units? I didn't, um, catch it all.
I believe it's nine-twenty-eight Route twenty-eight. Um.
It's right before the Zootie Building. It's a.
It's right next to it, actually.
It's a, is it a half cape or a full cape? I can't remember.
It's a, it's a full cape, kind of tucked in a little hollow. There's a.
It's overgrown. The, you don't see it really because of the, the shrubbery around it right at the moment.
And actually, as it turns out, uh, they wanted to release that structure, and there have been a couple of people that are involved in, they're going to try and rescue it and move it to another site. The only question is whether logistically they can, you know, get it through the streetscape as configured, um, which should be interesting. But, you know, there is movement on it, so they're going to save that all the house.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Nine-twenty-eight.
There's a big Zuby sign.
Right past there. It looks like a bed and breakfast back in there. Says nine-two-eight Route twenty-eight.
Oh, I think you're, uh.
I might have the wrong address, actually. I think it's right before that.
It's fifteen minutes ago, otherwise.
Yeah.
It's in the, the, and the, um, cape that we're talking about, if you're heading from Harwich into Chatham, it's right before you get to the Zootie Building.
It abuts that property.
It's right next to it.
It's right next to it. It's right before it.
Yeah.
On the left-hand side.
Okay, thanks for clarification.
Yep.
And I apologize if I used the wrong address, so I will be more clear next time.
I just, I saw it literally fifteen minutes ago. So I wonder what nine-twenty-eight Route twenty-eight is.
Well, didn't it come up before historic?
It came up for historic, and we imposed a demo delay.
Yep.
At the time. Mrs. Kennedy was in, and she had asked for the, the demo delay because people were, um, were, uh, questioning the, the house and the, and the historic. I want to say the, one of the original postmasters, one of the Nickersons.
That's right.
Was the South Howard Post, uh, Postmaster, and it used to be in his, and it used to be in that house.
It's his fourth great-grandfather.
Yeah.
And, um, anyway, so it's, it's nice, and, um, all the hardware is, you know, circa eighteen-ten, eighteen-twenty, beautifully hand, hand-done. Hinges and doors that work perfectly well after two-hundred-and-twenty years or whatever, so it's pretty cool. Anyway. So, uh, I don't know if we have any further business before the board. Any other comments? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Munn?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Ms. Maslowsky?
Aye.
Ms. Brady?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Berry, aye. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Nice piece of business done tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate you calling in, Anne.
Bye, Anne.
No problem.
Hi.
If, before everyone parts, if you could sign.